Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is a regular commission meeting of Wednesday, February 7, 2018, at 7:30. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar, please rise.
Thank you, please rise. And let's bow our heads this evening and thank the Lord for the many blessings that we receive day in and day out, especially tonight by the presence of our very own employees, our first responders, our police officers and their families. This is the West Miami family, and for that, God, we are grateful to you tonight. We ask that you keep our military personnel safe and out of harm ways so that they can return to their families, as well our first responders, our firefighters and police officers. And we pray so that you can watch over our community and be comforting to those that are senior citizens, frail and needy. And we ask for all the blessings for our city. In your name, amen.
Amen.
For the pledge, Captain?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Muñoz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item, item four.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for January 10, 2018, special commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Presentation of minutes for approval for January 17, 2018, regular city commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, I would like to, Madam Clerk, I would like to take an item that actually is as an invitation. We have here tonight, we have Liz De La Cueva. She is running for District 114 as a state representative. Can you come up and welcome to the City of West Miami?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
By the way, let me clarify, she's a resident of the City of West Miami, very important.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening I'm here because there are actually about four candidates that are running for our district. Can you all hear me? Okay. So there's approximately four people that are running for our district. I, being one of them, happen to work for our school system. So when I decided that I wanted to go ahead and introduce myself, I thought it would be important that you know that, one, I am a resident of the City of West Miami. I have an interest in many of the issues that we have that affect us as residents, both our military, our firefighters and our police. So as you make your selection, and I do recommend that you make your inquiry, think about some of the important things that are valuable to us in our community. One, maintaining our firefighters, their benefits, something that is definitely under attack today. Our teachers, we are now facing a de-unionization when it comes to teachers and their benefits, as well as our police. We in the City of Miami are very fortunate that we have a community that's very complete, but not everybody is as fortunate. So it is important that when we do decide to vote, and I do recommend that everybody exercises their right to vote, make your selections important to you, important to the people that protect your cities. As a doctor in my system and the educational system, the situations that we have that are affecting our educational system happen to affect our public school system. We are now facing what we call a complete district charter school implementation. So some of you may have heard that, some of you may have not. Let me explain what that means.
Ms. De La Cueva, I'm sorry to interrupt you for the preservation of the record, Mayor.
Yes.
We need the...
Did you look through the cameras?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
The camera and the mic, just so that we can preserve the record.
I apologize. As an educator, you know, I'm used to speaking to my audience, so I do apologize. So one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we are aware of is when we do become a complete charter district, which is what we are facing, we have 40,000 teachers that are going to be affected. What affects them? By becoming de-unionized, they face the fact that they may lose their pensions, their insurances and any coverage after their retirement. Public education is a wonderful factor, especially if you have children that do not require any special needs. Public education provides those special needs. Most of our charter schools do not. They do look for your stellar student, and that is wonderful, but there's a number of benefits that are required in order for us to educate our community. So with that said, I do have a website. There's information on there. Please feel free to look, to examine, to review the people who are running for candidates for this district. I have a vested interest as a candidate because I am a resident here, have been here for several years, and I invested in our school system. I've been in our school system for quite some time. So when I see that we are under fire, basically, it really worries me because I don't believe our community is well aware of all the issues that we are facing, okay? I will distribute some literature so that our people, our residents, are familiar with who I am, my level of education. I have a doctorate in the school system. I hold a master's in business administration and I hold a bachelor's in behavioral science. So I thank you tonight for allowing me to introduce myself. I encourage everybody to please vote. It is your right, and it is one that I do encourage. Without your voice, we do not have a city. Without your voice, we do not have a government. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, I want to move along to 11A, but at this time, with your permission, I want to recognize the employees on the Police Department. We have a lot of Police Department, I'm getting a little worried that we're all here tonight. Want to make sure the city is protected. So with that, Madam Clerk, I'll follow your order.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11, under New Business Agenda items, item 11A, Presentation of Employee of the Year 2017 awards. And we'll start with the presentation of award to Epifania Jimenez.
No, no, the Police Department.
You want to start with the Police Department?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to start with the presentation of award to Captain Pedro Delgado, Employee of the Year 2017 from the Police Department by Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. He has a cold today, so we'll be nice to him. I met Pedro Delgado when I first started working here at the Police Department. Been a while. We needed additional administrative help in the Police Department, and the decision was made to bring in Pete Delgado to fill those shoes, and they were very big shoes. And he's filled them exceptionally well. There's no task that I or Deputy Chief ask of Delgado to do that's not done, that's not done to near perfection. He has juggles his time between what his duties are here. He's active in Army Reserve, as you all know. He teaches with me at several universities, so he has a full plate. I'm proud to have him as my captain, and again, his work is outstanding, and that's why he was selected for this award for 2017.
Thank you. With that, I would like for our colleagues to go forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add to what the chief said, I've known Pete since he was a baby. And we'll leave it at that. And I have to, I would like for us to all recognize, because I do, that Pete has evolved, developed professionally and personally beyond any expectations. Pete has become a true leader in this department, and I think that it's evidenced by the show of police officers representing our fine city here, that this administration is a dream team, and you're part of that, Pete. And I'm really proud of you as a manager, and I call you a friend. So thank you for your service, both to the military and to the people in this country, to the residents in this country, and for your service here to the city and its citizens. Pete is here this evening with his three sons and his mother, and he left the rest of the clan at home. So thank you again, Pete.
With that, we want to recognize Captain Pedro Delgado for the Police Department for your outstanding service and recognition of your commitment to improving the quality of life and display of leadership. Congratulations. Mayor Eduardo Muñoz and the Commissioner of West Miami, dated the 7th day of February 2018.
Mayor, for the record also, we can't forget to inform the residents that are here and the family members that as part of the committee chaired by Vice Mayor Blanca, this decision was not made by one person. It was a decision made by a group of people that have assessed Pete for all of his credentials and everything he does for the city. So Vice Mayor, thank you for your input as well.
Pete, you got to say something. You got to say something. By the way, we need the family to come over here.
I'm going to use the mic because I have a cold today, and you're not going to be able to hear me, but hard work and dedication is what I've always told my children, that they need to follow suit by, and everything else will fall into place. I tell Nicholas all the time that good looks will only get him so far, then he's going to have to do some work. I want to thank the chief for the recommendation and the deputy chief, and also, this is my hard work, but it's because of the men and women in this Police Department, okay? That's why I work hard, is for you guys. So thank you for showing up. I appreciate it.
Madam Clerk.
Captain, if I might say, this is one fine-looking department you've got right now.
Yes, indeed. Well, most of them.
No, all of them.
You said good-looking?
As in, well, you could interpret, yes. Fine as in, as in show of force.
Work, work. Yeah.
But good-looking included. Absolutely.
We had someone here responsible for the recent drop in the stock market.
Can I ask you to please take a picture with your member, with the department members, please? Chief, Carlos?
The untouchable.
The untouchable.
Stand in the front. Stand in the front.
Stand in the second row.
Ay, 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 porcito. Daddy.
Mayor, Commissioner, Spanish. Get in there. Sure. Go to the front. Go to the front. Do it. Do it, do it. Do it.
He's taking a photo. He's taking a photo.
Like the restaurant.
No, no. For this group, we sure do.
No, no. Are you happy?
Well, you have a...
There's one that can talk.
Mayor, would you like to take your Award of Excellence?
Yes.
No? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you would, let me direct you to item 11, under New Business Agenda item, Presentation of Mayor's Award for Excellence for 2017 to Deputy Chief of Police Carlos Avila.
Chief?
This is the police night.
I mentioned...
Just hang around there for a little bit.
I mentioned how long I had known Pete since I started working here. I've known Carlos longer probably than some of the policemen in our department or have been alive. So we go back a long time. We worked a lot of serious homicide cases together. When I was deciding on who to choose as my number two in the Police Department, there was no doubt that it was going to be Carlos Avila. He brings a wealth of information and knowledge and tacit knowledge to the department and to the city as a whole. His contacts, both in the Police Department and in the political realm, are second to none. And again, whenever there's a tough task, something that needs to be done, that's sensitive, I call upon Carlos and the job gets done immediately, which is one of the things that sometimes he, I, he wants everything done right now. And I say, no, we can do that tomorrow. No, it's got to be done right now. But that's okay. That's the way he is, and the job gets done, and it gets done extremely well. So I'm proud to have him as my deputy chief, and this, I'm glad of your selection, Mayor. It's very well deserved. Thank you.
I'll be short and to the point. Why select Carlos Avila as the mayor choice? To me, it has to be somebody that goes above the duty, you know, the call of duty. Deputy Avila, and I want to call you Carlos, I'm sorry. I had to call you Carlos. He's there all the time. I don't know how he does it, and the wife can attest to that when he's missing, but every time that there's something that needs to be done, he's there. I mean, and the chief was not lying when he says it's got to be done now. He goes above the call of duty, like I mentioned before. He has, chief, he has your back all the time. And I have noticed, not only with Deputy Carlos Avila, a change in the Police Department, but also with our chief. There was a time that our department didn't look the way it looks now. The people didn't get along the way they, and that is only based on leadership. And people follow when you have a leader that really, and that's the combination. I mean, I think we have the best combination of a chief and a deputy chief here. And with that, all I can tell you is he's there, and he goes beyond anybody that I have seen in my life. So with that, let's go forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, may I as well? I can't think of anyone more deserving of this award than Carlos Avila. Carlos, as our Deputy Chief of Police, he is committed, dedicated, loyal to the city. But above all, he is very protective of his officers. Anytime I address something with the chief and with the deputy, they really have your back, and I want you to know that coming from my office. And sometimes we're sitting at opposite ends on issues. He protects you, he defends you, he cares for you, and I don't think that you can find better leaders. And I think that's evidence, I think you all know that by now, and I think that's evidenced by your presence tonight. I've known Carlos for 30 years, and I cannot tell you enough about Carlos, his integrity, his devotion to the profession, because law enforcement is not a job. It is a profession where you have to be devoted to do what you guys do day in and day out. And I have to tell you, you need to lead by example, and Carlos is a living testament of leading by example, and of course, obviously, under the direction and the mentoring of your Chief of Police. Although quiet, don't confuse it. He's a very powerful man. Chief, thank you for your selection. I think you have assembled a team of true professionals, and for the first time in many, many years, and I got to tell you, I've been here 35 years, 35 years, I've never seen a Police Department as committed as I see it. And that's an example of your leadership, the deputies and our captain, and I thank you all for what you do.
I can attest to that. So tonight, we want to give you the Mayor's Award for Excellence 2017 for Carlos Avila, Deputy Chief, City of West Miami Police Department, in recognition of your dedication, loyalty, commitment to the City of West Miami, and, I can't say this word, citizens. Making a difference, that's what it's all about. On behalf of Eduardo Muñoz, dated this 7th day of February 2018. Congratulations.
Mayor, could we invite his family to join him and then his West Miami family?
Wife, please.
Mrs. Avila.
Immediate family.
Machín.
Immediate family.
His daughter and his son Fernando. Go up with your department, madam. Go Luz. Go Luz. Go Luz.
Carlos, we know you got to.
Facebook.
Mr. Mayor, one thing, I saw some envelopes taped to the back of the captain and the deputy chief's plaques, so I'm just reminding them that the chief's off his diet.
You need new shoes. Carlos, she needs new shoes.
I think now we should stand up.
If we can follow, back to the presentation order of the agenda, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, and at this time, I would like for my colleagues to stand so we don't have to go back and forth.
Okay, and then we'll call it out. Is that okay, Anetti?
Yes.
All right. Presentation of award to Epifania Jimenez, Employee of the Year 2017 for the West Miami Community Center Department. Epifania. Epifania Jimenez. Nereida. Epifania Nereida Jimenez. On behalf of Marilyn Miraya, who is recovering, our project director who's recovering from surgery, it is my privilege and my honor to present her nomination for Employee of the Year. Epifania Nereida Jimenez has been working for the City of West Miami Community Center as an employee since October 3, 2008. However, before that, she was a volunteer with our community center. In her 10 years of employment with the city, Ms. Jimenez has proven to be a responsible, hard-working, caring and devoted person, especially towards our senior citizens who are at times frail and in need of special tender love and caring. In this last year, Ms. Jimenez has been assigned additional responsibility aside from her daily job duties, and she never complains or refuses to do the work. Marilyn Miraya is surrounded by an outstanding group of individuals that really care for our center, as it is evidenced for special events. Every time you walk in there, our senior citizens are well cared for. They have their meal, they have a place where they come every day to spend time, make friends and enjoy some dignity time. And for that, Epifania is extremely part of this collaboration effort, and she's highly recognized for her dedication. Epifania is joined this evening by her family, her children, their spouses and her granddaughter and grandson. And so she also leads by example. Everyone who's recognized this evening is really part of the West Miami family. So, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to leave that for the record and on behalf of Marilyn Miraya, her direct supervisor.
So here, we want to present you with this plaque for employment of the City of West Miami, 2017, presented by Epifania Jimenez. Community Center Department, for your outstanding service and recognition of your commitment to improving the quality of life, display of leadership. Congratulations, Eduardo Muñoz, Mayor of City of West Miami and the City Commission, dated the 7th day of February 2018. What is really important, there hasn't been sent here, is seeing her in action, how she cared for all the people in that community center. And I can attest to that, because my father was part of it. And the daily activity, you can walk in there at any time and you can see her very attentive to everybody in that place. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may also, on a personal note, my grandmother went there many, many years, and she would come home every day and tell me what a wonderful job she did and how much she loved being there, and always, always spoke very highly of me. See you later, see you later. So, here, we want to present you with this plaque for employment of the City of West Miami 2017, presented to you by, I can't say that. Epifania Jiménez, Community Center Department, for your outstanding service and recognition of your commitment to improving the quality of life, display of leadership, congratulations, Eduardo Muñoz, Mayor of the City of West Miami, and the City Commission, dated this seventh day of February 2018. What is really important, that hasn't been sent here, is seeing her in action, how she cared for all the people in that community center. And I can attest to that, because my father was part of it. And the daily activity, you can walk in there at any time, and you can see her very attentive to everybody in that place. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may also, on a personal note, my grandmother went there many, many years, and she would come home every day and tell me what a wonderful job she did, and how much she loved being there, and always, always spoke very highly of you. See you in the scene.
Felicidades. The next item, Mr. Mayor, if I may, would be the presentation of award to Raisa Ortiz, Employee of the Year for 2017, in the Finance and Administration Division. There's a memo in your pocket. If I may, if I may make mention of Raisa's award. Our office nominated Raisa Ortiz as the recipient of the 2017 City of West Miami Finance and Administration Employee of the Year. Each year, we assess individuals within our division and observe who is the one that walks the extra mile to better serve the residents of the City of West Miami and those who visit our city. By far, in 2017, Raisa has met and exceeded all the conditions and has raised the bar for excellence in delivering city services. Raisa Ortiz began her employment with the City of West Miami in August of 2010, where she worked as a custodian. Raisa resigned in 2012 and moved to Virginia, she's also known as Ms. Virginia. In 2015, she moved back to Miami, Florida, she came back home, and at the time, we were planning for a vacancy left by Maria's retirement. And she walked in the door right about this, at the right time. She expressed an interest in filling that vacancy and wanted that opportunity where she could develop over time, and we created that opportunity for Raisa. Since then, Raisa has learned her English, she has gone back to school and enrolled to get some, to attain some basic accounting courses. And since then, Raisa, also known as Ms. Virginia, as Commissioner Luciano Suárez has given her this name, has become part of the elite group of our Finance and Administration team. She's on point, she's pleasant, she's efficient and thorough. Her work and her desire to do better is a constant reminder that if you try hard enough and you set goals for yourself, you can make it, you can make a difference. Raisa is another example that you can make it better and be bigger if you try hard enough. And it is for those reasons that you are hereby our nomination, and it is with great pleasure that I nominate you for this award for 2017. Thank you, Raisa, for a job very well done. Yes, and she is the life of the party. Raisa is accompanied this evening, she has a son, I don't think he's here tonight, he may be in school. But her daughter is here, her grandson Chino's here, her boyfriend, and her future son-in-law. So, would you join your family members, so you could take a family picture? And Chino's our adopted grandson. Hey, Chinito, ese es una maravilla.
Chino, ay, 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 ahí está ahora.
Chino, siéntate. No Happy Meal for him. Obrídate. Thank you. Congratulations. The next item is a presentation of award to Jose El Román, known as our beloved Cheo, Employee of the Year 2017, from the Public Works Department. The man. And we'll have, Mr. Mayor, if we can, if we could hear from Mr. Penna, he's, would like to share some of his thoughts with us.
You know, I'm not surprised that you're the Employee of the Year. You know, I am proud of all our employees, our police department, our sanitation department, our code enforcement, our permitting department, administration, just about all our employees are like family to us. But, you know, Cheo, just today, I noticed him out there, and, you know, I don't think there's anyone that works as hard as he does.
I know.
You know, the employees are the lifeblood of the city. They are what makes the city run. And Cheo is like the heart. I mean, I've seen this man work, can work hard diligently, and, you know, without attracting attention to himself, you know, he gets the job done. He's out there in the morning, in the evening, and he does whatever it takes, and he does whatever he is told to do by his boss. So, it was, it was, uh... I will. But it was, uh, uh, you know, a serendipity that I get handed this to me, because, you know, I didn't want to say these things about you. And, you know, everything kind of... There's no coincidence. Are you guys, you guys gotta go catch a...
No, I need to.
So, you know, I just can't say enough, so I thank you, thanks for your service.
This is an Employee of the Year award, presented to Jose El Román Cheo, Public Works Department, for your outstanding service and recognition of improving the quality of life and display of leadership. Congratulations, Eduardo H. Muñoz, Mayor of the City of West Miami, and the City Commission, dated this seventh day of February 2018.
Mr. Mayor, above all the work that Cheo does for us, this year, he went ahead and he finally got his commercial CDL license on his own, which helps out the department tremendously, because now he's able to move any of our vehicles around. Just tonight, he's coming from the repair of a water line that I showed some of you the video. So, sometimes I don't know how he does it, but he's usually here 24 hours a day, and seven days a week. So, it's well-deserved.
Cheo, thank you for all that you do for the city. Thank you. Cheo? While we're at it, Mercy, don't go anywhere. Don't go far. Ms. Soler, presentation of award to Mercedes Soler, Employee of the Year 2017, for the Public Services Department.
Again, this year, our department is run with a great backbone, and that is Mercedes Soler. She attends to all of her duties, that I don't know how she gets them all done. But she was a great choice for our department and for the building department.
And you took her from us.
No, we, I didn't take. I picked.
No, you took.
And that was the best choice I've ever made. Without Mercy back there, things could go chaotic. But I know that no matter what I assign to her, it gets done in the most professional manner there ever is. She really is the support of that building, and I thank her for it.
Mercy, real quick, before the mayor, I thank you for your service as well. Mercy has accepted additional assignments, as Mr. Penna has said, no matter what you throw at her, it gets done, and it gets done with the utmost of integrity and professionalism. Mercy has also developed professionally over the years. She started working with the city's recreation center, and she was offered an opportunity in the Finance and Administration. And at that time, Mr. Penna needed her, and she moved on back to the department where she continues to excel and develop. And this young lady has, is going places. And the future of West Miami is just brighter because Mercy serves as the administrative assistant. Thank you for your service, Mercy.
Well, I can tell you, I met Mercy when she used to work at the park. No, it's about the same, no, it was two years ago, it was more than two years ago. Never contradict the mayor, never. So, anyway, she has come a long, long way. And I can tell you, this department is very, very special to me. As you probably know, or you don't know, the building department was created a few years ago, and it was a dream of mine, along with a lot of people over here, with Mr. Penna, city manager. And the whole idea was to serve the citizens of West Miami, in terms of building permit, etc. And I'm just gonna tell you one thing. I don't know how many times I get a call about a complaint, about somebody that somehow the permit is not getting, you know, that they're not getting the permit because things are not moving along. The first thing I do, I pick up the phone and I call Mercy. Guess what? She has everything in check, and the reason it's not getting, you know, the permit's not going forward is not because she dropped the ball. On the contrary, she asked for certain items to be performed, and certain calculations to bring over, certain plans to bring, and the people have failed to do that. And I can tell you a hundred times, a hundred percent, of those phone calls, she's always right. So, she's really on point. Mr. Penna, the best thing could happen to you, I can tell you that. Okay, and with that... I'm not gonna leave you, I'm just gonna say Mercy Soler, we're very proud of you, congratulations.
Zoe, look at the camera. Cheese? Mercy has her mom and her dad, her sister, and her nephew and niece here with her. Ryan, that's right. And you are blessed to have this wonderful support at home, and call them your family. Let's take a picture.
Please show what we are in the picture, please.
Thank you, Mercy. And last but not least, on the recognition trail, is a presentation of award to Lauren Pérez, Employee of the Year for 2017, City of West Miami Recreation Center. Lauren is not here this evening, but our Parks and Recreation Center Director is here, John Michael López. Thank you for a job well done, John. And if you can accept the award on Lauren's behalf, I think she's in school, continuing to develop and, and take her educational goals to the next chapter of her life. Big and tall. And if I can read for the record your memorandum and your selection, Mr. Michael, John Michael López. He selected Lauren Pérez Pérez as the Employee of the Year for 2017, as the administrative assistant at the Recreation Center. Basically, Lauren is responsible for taking care of all the office duties at the Recreation Center. Lauren is in the process of completing her bachelor's degree in psychology at Florida International University. Even with a busy work and school schedule, Lauren has always made herself available, I mean, for something as simple as passing out flyers, coordinating benefits, working events at the multipurpose facility, working weekends, and as called upon. Lauren has had a great impact on her coworkers, she is mentoring her coworkers, and she serves as a mentor to the children at the West Miami Recreation Center. And he is truly proud, as I am, that Lauren Pérez is the recipient of the Recreation Center 2017 award. Thank you, Mr. John Michael López, and thank you for what you do for the young ones in the community. Mr. Quintana will put Lauren into the picture somehow. Yeah, Photoshop her. Jim and John. There you go. That concludes your presentations for this evening, and we go back to the agenda, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we can.
Five-minute break.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Five-minute breaks, Mr. Keith.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so, we're back at the table, and we're gonna start with the reports, waiting for Commissioner Suárez to come back. Madam Manager, item five.
Right, report of the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report at this time.
Okay.
Next item, item six, report of the city attorney, none this evening.
And by the, by the way, the city attorney is excused tonight.
Is excused this evening, yes.
Item seven.
You start the break in, one, twenty minutes' break. You start the break in the minute number one. I just start the break in the minute number eighteen.
The... Don't worry, Commissioner, just join in. Item seven, um.
Report of the city engineers, none this evening. Item eight, committee reports, Report of the mayor.
I have committee reports, Mr. Mayor.
So do I. So, go ahead.
Shall I go first?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Why, thank you, sir. Okay, I have um, a couple of reports, actually. Um, I had the pleasure of reading Somerset Gables West. They um, issued two of volume one. They started a newsletter, um, a newsletter on, on campus called the Megalodon Post. And I was reading, well, having lunch one day and I go, wait, wait a minute, it says West Miami. So, I read it, it's super cute, so I wanted to share it with you. We are in their newsletter. It says, "Tree lighting at West Miami Recreation Center. On December fourteenth, Somerset Gables Particip- Somerset Gables West participated in West Miami's tree lighting ceremony at the Recreation Center. It was a beautiful ceremony that included presentations by our musical theater, i-dance and ballet groups. The tree was lighted right before the musical numbers began." Remind you, this is, these are written by the children. So I thought it was actually quite special. Um, there was a lot to do. They had various rides, a bounce house, and yummy food and drinks. It was so much fun. A big thank you to Commissioner Rodriguez, City Manager Aguilar, West Miami Mayor Mojina, and the City of West Miami for a wonderful activity at the Rec Center. It's always tons of fun. So I thought that was super cute that they wrote about us, um, in their, in their school newspaper. And my second report is, I had the pleasure of attending, uh, on behalf of the Naleo Educational Fund, a roundtable at Miami Senior High, which is a beautiful school, on Monday. Um, and it was about the census, uh, 2020, it's census time. And it, uh, it brought forward the, the importance of the census and everyone being counted. Unfortunately, um, 2010 missed 400,000 young children in the census. And when children are missed to that, in that magnitude, there are monies that are not provided for, for programs like Head Start, VPK programs, educational programs for children. If they're not count, if they're not accounted for, the money cannot be allotted to whatever that area is that they're from. So, um, it's very important that we spread the word, um, on the census 2020 and the importance of everyone, you know, turning in their census and be, and being accounted for. Very important for our city as well, because we've had, uh, we've had a lot of growth and we have to show the residents, we have to show that the people live here, so that the certain monies or pools of money that we can receive, we will receive, you know, once the, once the people are counted. Um, and this was brought, um, this roundtable was by the Naleo Educational Fund, which is, you know, why I went, because of, of the committee. Um, and I just thought it was, uh, very, very informative, and I brought back some packages. I gave you each a package to read up on it. And another thing that they're starting this year, which, you know, they're, they're going to have a lot of media, a lot of information out in the press, is it's gonna be online for the first time. The census is gonna come out online. They, of course, will follow up, you know, people that don't turn it in, they'll follow up, you know, knocking on the door and stuff. But um, it's gonna be online and their concern is, the millennials who do everything online, they might, may not understand the importance of turning the census back in. We do, you know, we, we, we do, our, our age group does. But the millennials may not understand how very important it is. So just spread the word. I invited Marilyn from the department, um, to come back. She's been at one of our meetings before. So I invited her back, you know, if she'd like to come and speak to, to our residents about the importance of the census. So, it was very, very informative and um, I'm glad I, I went and was able to share that, what I learned, um, at the roundtable with you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anybody else, uh, for committee report? Okay, I, I got two items. Uh, number one, I, something that is, uh, I'm sure is gonna be very dear to, to you. Uh, I wanna say that, um, Commissioner Blanes came up with this idea, uh, about recognizing our city manager for her service, for thirty-five years of service. And, and I know you went on and on and spoke very highly of her. And uh, so, I took it upon myself to put it in the agenda, uh, well, in, under committee report, 'cause I didn't have time for it. But uh, basically trying to get your blessings to do, uh, a recognition to our city manager that is well, well deserved. And um, that would be, uh, basically I bring it to the table to, to get your, your blessing to move forward. Uh, I have spoken to, uh, to Cari and to Mr. Q to help out, uh, put something nice. And I, I just leave it at that. And uh, your participation is very welcome. So, uh, you know, feel free to, to talk to, uh, I will tell you later on, you know, we need to assign a person, so, so things don't get, uh, crazy. Uh, but um, you know, and I will, I will share that with you later on. But basically, I bring it to this table for, for your blessing, uh, to move forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Forty-five years of service.
No, thirty-five, thirty-five.
Thirty-five, thirty-five.
Forty-five years, I, working here, she deserves it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and, you know, it's not just the thirty-five years.
Thirty-five.
Thir- thirty-five?
Thirty-five.
But you started when you were ten, right?
There you go. You're my best friend.
You know, it's not just, it's not just the thirty-five years of service and all the accomplishments, you know, and all the things that our manager has done, but the fact that she is the first Cuban-American female to be city manager, possibly in the whole country. You know, definitely in the whole state of Florida. So that in itself is, is, is something that we should, you know, allow, you know, uh, um, I, 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 I know that, that there's no one, no one possibly that we could find that would care more to do a job, uh, the job of city manager in this city. Um, you know, and that, that, that in itself, you know, it's, it's, it needs to be recognized. And um, you know, you've been a, a, a trailblazer, you know, for many others that have come behind you. Uh, so, you know, that, for that and many, many other things, I think that, you know, we need to recognize our city manager, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all.
You know, we, we've never seen eye to eye, you know, all the time, you know, and we've had our fights, you know, and that's been a good thing.
It will continue to happen. It's actually, it's a good thing.
Yeah, but uh, you've done an incredible job and you deserve to be recognized.
Thank you, sir.
What do you propose, Mayor?
Thankful for the mayor, too.
Roses?
Thank you.
Like, like I said, you, you, you can, you can, uh, be yourself. You propose anything, I will give you a contact person. Most likely, by the way, I'll, most likely that's gonna be Cari. Uh, you know, so, uh.
We, yeah, I think Commissioner Suarez should be in charge of the entertainment, in, in charge.
Of the committee, of the committee.
Where we're gonna go, where we're gonna go eat and drink, you know, I, I think that, that Commissioner Suarez needs to be in charge of that.
Mr. Mayor, you not only have my blessing, but I will also go to Cari and offer my support in any way, shape or form that she needs. I'll be happy to help with anything.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Yes. Anyway, so basically, all I need is your blessing. All I favor say aye? Aye. Second item, second item is, um, I don't know, for some reason, I, I, I feel that we should recognize our city attorney, Pepe Villalobos. Uh, during our meeting tonight, of the charter review board, I think, my, this is my opinion, I think he was stellar. Uh, we have been struggling for many months trying to decipher the, uh, the charter. And um, I, for the first time, I saw it come together tonight. I know he put a lot of effort and a lot of work and follow-up, but uh, I don't know if it was the pressure that he was under pressure that I needed to take a plane, but absolutely, he was stellar tonight. I, I congratulate, um, Mr. Pepe Villalobos, our city attorney. So.
I, I agree, I second that.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I think that the way that he was able to decipher and take one thing and, and apply it to the other and extrapolate it and, you know what, I.
We call that dissecting the frog.
You know, I, I don't, I don't know, but you know, uh, I, I think that finally, we're gonna get something done that needed to be done, you know, and we've struggled with it, so. And we've tried many times to, to get it done before and we weren't able, so.
Well, we're not there yet, but, but I think tonight was a big strike.
Big, yes, absolutely.
So, anything else?
Don't tell me, roses for him. We have to get another thing for him.
Mr. Mayor, how would you like to recognize the city attorney so that we can at least assist you with, uh, the preparation of the recognition or a letter signed by you, by everyone in the commission? How would you like to proceed? You wanna talk about it and then?
Yes, uh, let's talk about it. I just wanted to bring it to the table and, and get, uh, your blessings on it, so, thank you. Uh, and that's all I have for committee report. Uh, we can follow the order of the agenda. What's the next item? Madam Clerk?
Next item is, uh, citizen presentations.
Okay, any citizen presentations?
Mr. Mayor, item ten, under unfinished business, none this evening. And the next item on the agenda by the order would be then, item eleven B. This is a resolution of the mayor on city commission of the city of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal from Miracle Recreation Equipment Company for the purchase of a shade structure as part of the Garden Club Park Expansion Project for the price of fourteen thousand twenty dollars, to include the purchase of a shade structure and the labor involved in the construction, waiving the need for competitive bidding, providing a hundred percent cost to be paid from the City of West Miami Park input fees, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Okay.
That means that no cost to the taxpayer, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the, I don't know if any, everybody's gotten a chance to go by the Garden Club Park, but, uh, it is coming along very nicely. Uh, two of the structures are in. Uh, they also have the same shade structure that we're gonna put over the existing, uh, playground structure for the little ones, for the tots. Uh, there are some parts that are in order for the one, for the top, uh, structure to replace, uh, items that were damaged during the hurricane airma. And uh, uh, once we get that one up and running, then the next two things that'll go in will be the two gazebo's that were planned for that park and the restroom, which is on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Any questions? Yes?
Before you vote on it, I would request that we, um, make a, a friendly amendment, as you would title it, um, on the title, not only highlighting the Garden Club Park, but the physical location, only because it's cleaner from an auditing standpoint and for our fixed assets, if we can include the actual physical address of the property.
Okay.
Which is?
Eleven twenty-nine Southwest sixty-sixth Avenue, West Miami three-three-one-four-four.
Okay. Any further question for the manager?
I do. Mr. Penna, you presented two pictures in our package. This is the picture of the existing, um, shade structure, right, on the new, on the new equipment?
Correct.
So, is this other picture gonna be what's going to go over the toddler playground? Or is it gonna be?
No, the same blue one.
The same one?
Yeah.
Okay, I just saw two of the pictures, I wondered. Okay, good.
Motion.
Okay, I need a second. Blue second? Okay, can you call the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, add your vote. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca. Mayor Mojina.
Yes.
Five-zero, item passes.
Okay, next item?
Next item is a resolution of the mayor on city commission of the city of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal from Romtech Inc. for the purchase of a model two thousand and four Sierra One restroom with storage as part of the Garden Club Park Expansion Project for the approximate price of forty-four thousand to forty-eight thousand dollars to include the purchase of a pre-engineered packaged building kit design to meet all state and local codes for a site-built permanent structure, providing for a hundred percent of cost to be paid from City of West Miami Park input fees, providing for effective date, address eleven twenty-nine Southwest sixty-sixth Avenue.
Again, Mr. Mayor, this was part of the original, uh, plan for the park. Uh, as you know, the first bid for the, the complete fabrication of the park was over, around six hundred thousand dollars. We went ahead and broke it up into sections in order to get the cost down, and we have managed to do that. This will be a prefab, uh, bathroom structure, just like the one we have at Cooper Park.
Okay.
This, this is, I, I, this is a CVS structure, right?
Just like the one at Cooper Park, yes.
Motion.
Wait, 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 before, before the motion, uh, well, perhaps you have the same question. Where's the coming, the money again?
Impact fees, no cost to the taxpayer.
Hey, well, I wanna ask the question on the record. Okay, thank you.
Impact fee.
Go ahead, uh.
Remind me again, where in the park would this be located, more or less?
This is on the trail leading from the, from the, uh, tot to the two new structures.
So towards the front of the playground?
More or less, yeah. It's in between.
And, and the only reason I, is the bathroom necessary because of the grant or we're, we're putting in?
We're putting in, 'cause there's a lot of people visiting it.
Because of a lot of people. And, and I'm only bringing this up because a resident, um, brought this concern to me. Um, because of the, of the area of the city this is going in, you know, might this, this bathroom, I don't know, be a, a spot for people that shouldn't be at the park to use it? Um, just be sure that we, you know, we have the police patrolling the area as usual?
Parks are sunup, sundown.
It was just a concern that was brought to me, um, and, and that the resident wanted me to ask if, if the bathroom was, was necessitated because of the grant or the fact that the city wanted, you know, wanted the bathroom there.
Yes.
And they were just concerned about the safety, um, let's put out the safety aspect.
They're usually locked at sundown.
The entire park is locked at sundown.
And the bathroom.
Perfect, thank you.
Motion.
I, I will, I will take it even further. Uh, I, with all due respect, Mr. Penna, this bathroom might be required by, by code.
And that's what I, that was my question, yes.
Might be what? Might be, might be required by code?
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
And that's actually where I was going, yeah, that's where I was going, if it was a requirement.
It is required.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
We need, we need that for our expansion.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so we have motion, I need a second. Okay, uh, can you call the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, add your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca. Mayor Mojina.
Yes.
Five-zero, item passes.
Next item?
Next item is a resolution of the mayor on city commission of the city of West Miami, authorizing the city manager the expenditure of thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars in connection with the labor to install new pipes at lift station number four of Southwest sixty-second Avenue on Southwest Eighteenth Street payable to Desmar PC Inc., providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Again, Mr. Mayor, we went ahead and we broke up the, the bid on this project also. This is for the renovation of lift station number four. Uh, several months ago, we placed the order to order the new pumps. They arrived at seventy-four thousand dollars for the two pumps, and we ordered recently the, all the piping inside the station, somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty thousand dollars. And this is the last, uh, part of it, which is thirty-eight thousand eight, thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars to put it all together and assemble it and redo the station. This is also part of our requirements with Durham for the, uh, as part of the CMOM and the consent decree with Miami Dade County.
And the mechanism for the funding of this item is in your twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen sewer budget. We allocated a hundred thousand dollars for the improvements and we believe that we will accomplish the work. A little bit more than the hundred thousand dollars, but, um.
Well, we have fifty from last year.
We have the fifty thousand that was carried over from the previous year, so we should be at a hun- under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on these items.
And this, the one alphabet, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion.
And anybody that, that think, uh, this is not a necessity, uh, wait until they break down.
That's right.
So, and I witnessed a couple of those.
And, and, and once these stations are going, Mr. Mayor, going to your earlier proposal, uh, we are looking at these, uh, portable generators, so to see what we can do to have backup power in the event of a storm. And believe it or not, you know, hurricane season is quickly approaching and we need to be ready as a community.
Four months away.
Okay, I have a motion on the table, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote?
Yes. Uh, Commissioner Rodriguez, add your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca.
Yes.
Mayor Mojina.
Yes.
Five-zero, item passes. Next item, item eleven E, a resolution of the mayor on city commission of the city of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal from NAPA Auto Parts for the purchase of a motor pool equipment for the new public services building. For the amount- for the amount of $47,880.80, providing 100% of the cost to be paid from the City of West Miami Police and Sewer Input Fees, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Again, Mr. Mayor, our building is finished, and we have possession of it. This is the equipment that we have discussed, which is the lift for the, for the garbage trucks, and then the, the lifts for the garage, for the, for the police cars and the public works vehicles.
This item, Mr. Mayor, was also, is, was also contemplated in the 2017-2018 budget, and we come to you to get a formal approval. And again, we're transferring money from impact fees to fund this activity.
Yeah, because this, this is under the impact fee.
Capital improvement.
Yeah, products, they, they were, motion.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, add your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca.
Yes.
Mayor Mojina.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes. Next item on the agenda, it's item 11F, resolution of the mayor on City Commission of the City of West Miami, rescinding resolution 2017-36 passed and adopted on August 16, 2017, and adopting a new resolution to comply with the terms and conditions of a FERDAP contract number 8017071, authorizing the city manager to accept a proposal in the amount of $52,943.82 from Miracle Recreation Equipment Company for the purchase of new playground equipment for Edmund Cooper Park, provided, funded by the 2016-17 FERDAP grant, in the amount of $35,000, with the match from park input fees in the amount of $18,000, the City of West Miami Park input fees, for a total of $52,943.82, providing for effective date, providing for severability, mayor and city commission.
Mayor, before you vote on it, so that you're clear on this item, the City of West Miami was awarded $65,000 under a FERDAP grant, all thanks to the work that everyone is doing. But as chairman of the Recreation Committee, Commissioner Blanes has worked diligently to bring up the standards for our parks and our playground equipment. This is part of that grant that we are going to, that if, with your approval, we're going to replace the one unit at Cooper Park, since the other one was recently replaced, and then with that grant, complete the VIDA course. So this is part of a FERDAP grant from the state of Florida that.
Our majesty, eighteen.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I make a motion, this is something that we need in the books.
I, I have a question, too.
It's very clear.
Yes.
Mr. Penna, is this the same program, the same program, the same playground equipment that you and I went to see that day?
That's correct.
Right, that's, I recall that you were going to go see it. The, the ground.
The matting is included.
Okay, all right.
We actually have to enlarge the area, because the newer playground is larger, so.
A little bigger.
The lag concrete and then redo the, the two-inch rubber matting ground.
And it's included in the, in the price.
In the price.
Okay.
Now, you said this is for the VIDA course, is this also for the repaving, reservicing of the actual trail?
Motion.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez, add your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca.
Yes.
Mayor Mojina.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Penna, when can we expect this to be completed? Or to even begin, when, when do you?
Usually it takes about four weeks to get the equipment here. So shortly after that, so I would say sometime around April, mid-April.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, next item.
Item 11G, request for recognition to Honorable Yvonne Cuesta for being appointed by the governor to serve as Circuit Court Judge in the 11th Judicial Circuit of Florida, by Mayor Mojina.
Thank you. I'm sure that all of you sitting at this table know Yvonne Cuesta. Why a recognition? If you read the history, and by the way, I went to the ceremony, it was a beautiful ceremony. If you read her history and her commitment are incredible. I mean, we're talking about a lady that came to this country when she was about six or seven years old, around the time of the Marielle left, more or less. Single mom.
You can't hear the Marielle.
Yes, single mom, had many, many jobs to support her, and she became an attorney, working full-time during the day and going to night school. And, and her efforts are very admirable. I mean, this is a person that, and to be appointed by the governor, it's, is also, is, is a tremendous honor. So I bring it to the table, you know, for, hopefully we can, we can recognize her during the Woman Month. And I'll bring it to, you know, the table for your approval.
I agree.
I, I.
Great idea, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
Great idea.
Motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, thank you, next item.
Item 11A, request for key to the city to be presented to the Honorable Congresswoman Eliana Ross Laitnin for 30-plus years of dedicated public service, by Mayor Mojina.
I, Madam Manager, can you clarify in this item, we had a, a conversation on this item.
Yes, we did.
We might need to modify this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you want to bring it forward for the approval process, initially, there was the thought that you would be able to present this key if approved at the next manager's luncheon, which they intend to invite the mayors and city managers, because the Dade County League of Cities and the Managers Association are united in presenting a trailblazer award to Congresswoman Eliana Ross Laitnin as she gets closer to concluded, concluding her term in office. And for her numerous accomplishments, these two associations have united in, in this effort. However, Brian Andrews and President Rojas, who's the city manager for the City of Doral, based on the Congresswoman's schedule, have determined that one award will be given to her at this particular event taking place Fri, Friday, March 2. Therefore, your presentation of the key, if the commission awards it, would have to be in a different venue, at a different time and place. You may want to invite her here to chambers. You may have some other thoughts on how you wish to present her with a key to, from the City of West Miami, to take with her as a keepsake for her, for her, you know, long career, her three decades of, of public service.
So I bring this to your attention for approval, any comments, any suggestions?
Well deserved.
Okay, so, motion, I need a motion.
Motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, go to the order.
I do have something for the go to the order, Mr. Mayor. It's about our Memorial Day event. If you recall, I, we've discussed it a few times, and I met with the city manager, Mr. Penna, the police department. And it is a work in progress, so we're, we're changing it up again a bit. I believe the last time we talked about the parade, and I thought about scaling it down, okay? Well, it's not that we're going to scale it down, we're going to embellish and make what we've been doing for many, many, many years, just a little bit better of a celebration. What we've decided is on the Friday prior to Memorial Day, and anybody correct me if I misspeak here, we've always, the city has always placed a wreath at, see here at City Hall for Memorial Day, where the flower vendor would just come and put the wreath. So what I, what I suggested, what I'd like to do, is on the Friday before Memorial Day, that we're, all of us, whoever of us can be there, we're there to actually put the wreath, instead of having the flower vendor put it. Invite our color guard to be there, invite our, our rest room, the community center, the seniors to come out and be a part of it, and to have all the employees at City Hall come out. And the reason we thought about doing it on the Friday before is so that all of the city could participate. Stat, you know, the employees, the, the community center, as opposed to doing something at the, at Cooper Park. So it's not that we're going to start something new, it's always been done. I just want to, like I said, embellish the actual event a little bit more versus a parade or something at Cooper Park on a weekend, that we might not have the attendance that I would have expected right at first. So this is where we're going, this is what we thought about doing, I, you know, I'd like to hear your thoughts.
I think it's a great idea, yeah.
Okay, so it'll be just an hour, and not, probably not even, you know, just something here at City Hall on the Friday before. I invite all of you to come, you know, and we'll decide, I think, we decide on a time already?
Yes, ma'am, if my memory doesn't fail me, we spoke about 11:30 in the morning, only because that is the time where our senior citizens are arriving at the center, and it may be a good time before their lunch, for them to step out and honor those who served and, and lost their lives while serving the country.
And what day, again, that's a Friday before?
Friday, May 25.
The 25th. So we, we definitely want to, to honor and memorialize those veterans. And again, this is not something we're doing new, the city has always placed the wreath.
We always, yes, we always order a United States flag and American flag, and we display it in front of our flagpoles.
So I just thought we would, you know, again, you know, make it a little nicer of, 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 of an event.
Perfect, everybody agree.
Okay, so you, Commissioner Suarez, you're invited?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You got our blessing. Excellent idea. Anything else, we're go to the order. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Good night.
Thank you.